If I could please have your attention, thank you. Good evening. Boy Scouts Troop 132, Kalen and Connor Wolf. If you please step forward, and they are tenderfoots.
I was in civilian clothes, place hand of heart, dozen in uniform salute. Pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Good job, guys, thank you.
For God we got the better.
Lord, we humbly come before you this evening, and we just say thank you for this opportunity to meet in the city council and this government that was your idea in the first place, Lord. So we just say thank you, we just ask for humble hearts, and that we come together, and that we just bless the city, bless Porterville, and bless every member of it, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
And our precious heavenly Father, this is the greatest world in which to live, the greatest day to be alive, for this is the day you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And Lord, I am thankful, as a member of this great city, to affirm those who stand before me, as the men and women who lead us in this city, and I pray that you would continue to guide and direct them in all that they do. And Lord, as we think of this evening, it is a night of crisis, as many are, but crisis can go in two directions, Lord, it can bring us down a destructive pathway or be constructive. So we pray that, Father, the attitude which you provide for us would be that which would guide us in all that we do, that your wisdom would show forth the opportunity to be affirming, that, Lord, we thank you for the power of influence, but may that influence be in a positive way that builds up and brings unity. And, Lord, we do thank you for a community that is filled with diverse individuals, that in your eyes are greatly loved and appreciated, and I pray that, Lord, because of that, there would be a sense of unity amongst us all, that we want to do the very best, that can be assistance to this great community. So we pray this in your precious and holy name, and everyone said.
And I'd like to say something, I don't usually do this, but I'm inspired by the turnout tonight, and, oh heavenly Father, I want to thank you for motivating all these people to come down here and show their opinion and help us to make the decision that they feel is the right one, and I just hope that in the future we could get this kind of direction again on some of these decisions, no? Amen.
I have a proclamation that I'll be reading, LGBT Pride Month, June 2013. Whereas June is lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT Pride Month across the United States, and Porterville has a diverse LGBT community, which includes individuals from all walks of life, and whereas the LGBT community in Porterville has organized dinners and other activities to celebrate pride throughout the year, and whereas LGBT youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers, and more than one-third of LGBT youths have attempted suicide, nine out of ten LGBT youths report harassment at school, and three-fifths report feeling unsafe at school. And whereas high school students in Porterville have organized gay-straight alliances to fight bullying, provide support, and encourage education to combat homophobia.
Homophobia.
Homophobia, thank you. And whereas the Porterville College has organized PC Pride Club to fight bullying, to provide support, encourage education, whereas being out is the most important action members of the LGBT community can engage in to provide role models and to support young people who may be struggling with their sexual orientation. Now therefore, I, Virginia Garola, Mayor for the City of Porterville, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2013 as LGBT Pride Month in the City of Porterville, and commend the LGBT community for helping to raise awareness in our community, proclaim this fourth day of June 2013. We need to have order, thank you, we need to have order, thank you. I am going to point out that the proclamation is not a legislative action, it is a proclamation.
Apparently it was a democratic action either.
It's a proclamation, and when the proclamation is read, the individuals have, can say something.
I'd like to thank the mayor for this recognition of the hard work that we do in this community to try to prevent our youth from committing suicide and losing their talents to this planet and to this good country. Thank you.
I'd like to know if we can move oral communications up to this time?
Oral communications will be at the time that it's presented in the agenda.
Point of order, could I ask?
If we could please go forward.
Could I ask to move oral communications up?
Point of order.
Excuse me, are you a councilman?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We are going to continue with the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we move oral communications, there's a lot of good people here that would like to have their say, and I think we need to have...
They will, they will.
And I'll have mine.
We have oral communications.
Mayor Garola, Porterville City Council, on behalf of so many people who have struggled and worked very long time for this day, and on behalf particularly of the students at Porterville College, where I am faculty co-advisor of the Pride Club, we thank you and express our gratitude for the inclusion and for the welcoming and the changes that are taking place in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Garola, I would like to thank you too, as a part of a member of the LGBT community, you too, Councilmember Shelton, you've also supported me out there. Just on behalf, I spoke to you guys in the past, this is very important to us, it's very moving, we shed tears when we heard about this, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We will go on now with the...
Madam Mayor, I have, if I may?
Yes.
I'm pleased that you're pleased, however, my signature is not on there, I don't support this proclamation any way, shape, or form.
Your Honor. Can I bring order back again? The only signature on there is mine.
And I think we set a poor precedence for what a proclamation of Porterville is supposed to be. At the same time, I commend the mayor for being brave enough to do what she thought was right, so I appreciate that, but I don't support the proclamation.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I received a lot of feedback from the community, a lot of you thought we were able to vote on this item, we are not. Essentially, Virginia, or Mayor Garola, as the mayor approves proclamations and can initiate proclamations, so within the power that's vested in her at the current time, she solely acted on behalf of herself, the power, or the council doesn't have the power to rescind, that I'm aware of, or to stop proclamations, that rests within the mayor's power herself. So, to my knowledge, there are no other council members that signed the proclamation except for Mayor Garola, so I just wanted to be on record in that regard. So, although I do support anti-bullying and suicide prevention for all people, I think wrapping it up into the LGBT agenda is wrong, I think it divides the community, and it should have came forward as an anti-suicide or anti-bullying measure, not as an LGBT-specific thing, so.
Are there any other comments in the council? This is not general, but I'm gonna, we're gonna go ahead and do this.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. I guess my problem has to more do with the process, I don't like the way this whole thing came about, I don't like the way that proclamations are rammed in without at least polling the other councilmen, I don't know whereby a certain individual or group can control the council and make them act at their behest, no matter how righteous they believe their cause is. There's a lot of things about this that I didn't like, I absolutely do not like the process, I don't know, I think that to do this for their own personal agenda is despicable, and I am not, certainly not, in favor of the way this has came about, and I'm going to bring forward an action to change the way that proclamations are done, so that something like this doesn't happen again.
And again, I want to say again, this is a process that was handed to me as the mayor, it's not a process I developed, it's not a process that was created just recently, it's one that's been in the city, so if you wish to change that, that is up to the city council.
Never been abused like this before, though.
It's not being abused, I'm sorry.
Your Honor.
We're gonna go on with the agenda.
Mr. McCrory?
We have, go ahead.
No, I was calling for, within the council chambers, there are some, not supposed to be any demonstrations for or against anything, this is a deliberative body, we're supposed to make decisions, we're supposed to act like adults in here. So, please, don't make a big demonstration, you can be for or against, that's fine, but in the chambers, please, act respectful, thank you.
Thank you. The next presentations are for the chamber.
Ask again that we can move the oral communications up, I think there's a lot of people here, it's uncomfortable, it's hot, and I think they would like to have their say, it is democracy, I know, as incommunal as it can be sometimes...
Does the council have any problem with moving up the oral communications?
Objection.
I have an objection.
Well, then, shall we take a vote? I'll make a motion that we move oral communications up to now.
Second.
Do you have a one, second?
Second.
I voted to get them so we could just get this over with and get to the business of the city. Again, this is not a legislative item, it was a proclamation. I am going to ask, before opening our oral communications, one, we are going to have a 30-minute oral communications, two, that you have three minutes to make any comments. Before opening that, I am asking that we are civil and respectful when speaking. A proclamation is read at almost every council session for various events and activities that are forwarded by individuals in the community for different organizations, it's a public announcement by the mayor of the council. Again, I wish to reaffirm that we be respectful, we are a community, and we, I want to see us act like one. Thank you. I'm going to open oral communications at this time, and please give your name and address for the record, and come forward, and please speak into the mic. Somebody keeping time.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. I believe you have a paper that I wrote.
Pull your mic up just a bit.
I'm sorry. You have a paper that I authored this afternoon, it wasn't to my knowledge that the entire council didn't participate in this proclamation given, but I still am opposed to it as a citizen of this...
You'll need to speak into the mic.
I still oppose it.
What's your name, sir, I'm sorry?
My name's Carl Griffiths. I oppose this proclamation, I don't think that a proclamation that recognizes any particular group because of their sexual background is a reason to give them an award or a month. I believe that we're going down a slippery slope here, what's next, bestiality appreciation month? Or, we don't have a heterosexual month? Why do we have to recognize gay and lesbian? Because of their sexual preference?
Can I please have quiet?
It is not, it's my understanding that a great deal of dissent has occurred here in the council, that you yourself have taken it upon to make this proclamation, and because of your actions, I think we the citizens should take it upon ourselves to do a merile recall election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Griffith.
If we can avoid from the clapping, please, and the applause.
Good evening, Mayor Garola, City Council members.
Speak a little louder, please.
Sorry, my name is Patricia Thompson. My address is on record, I was here once before. I am the California State Director for Concerned Women for America. One, I would like to encourage you to continue to proclaim "In God We Trust" as our city motto states. Concerned Women for America is our nation's largest public policy women's organization, with a rich history of helping our members apply biblical principles to all levels of public policy for over 33 years. I sincerely, I didn't know that this was, the proclamation was going to be stated, and so I had prepared, I was hoping that, I wanted to say, I hope you would not declare this proclamation, it's discriminatory against both heterosexuals and gays to single them out in that way. If their agenda is really to make them feel normal and accepted, then why are they doing something that singles them out? Why would a city make such a proclamation honoring a sexual preference? And also, as the previous gentleman said, are you planning to proclaim and to celebrate heterosexual month? We feel this is inappropriate and needless. We have over 25,000 members in California, with over 500,000 members nationwide. Our mission is to protect and promote biblical values among all citizens, first through prayer, then education, and finally by influencing our society, thereby reversing the decline in moral values in our nation. We work to protect the traditional family through education, prayer, and action, and I was going to ask you to not declare this proclamation, so just thank you for hearing me, and I'm very saddened personally, I reside here in Porterville, and saddened at your proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
If we can please, I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to, that, we're just gonna cut the oral communications, please, can we still have the clapping? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Clausen, and I have a confidential address, because my husband's...
Can you speak a little louder, please?
My name is Lisa Clausen, I also reside here in Porterville, I would rather have keep my address confidential because of my husband's employment, but I also refer to the 25,000 members in California here of Concerned Women for America, but as a lifetime Porterville resident, it's upsetting that you say you want us to act as a community, but yet you've divided the lines, it is, either you're this side or this side, and instead of pulling us together, you have pulled us apart, we have to pick a side, which side are you gonna stand on? We need to be building our community together, we are an all-American city, this is not how an all-American city acts, and I'm very sad, and I've been sad all day long, and really gut-wrenching about what's going on, and we were really hoping that this wouldn't go in, and we just hope that there will be a way that we can bring the community together, instead of doing these proclamations at the last second to tear us apart. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hello, my name is Dustin Reader, I live in Pixley, California, Dustin, Dustin Reader?
Thank you, Dustin.
I live in Pixley. It's too late to ask you to not make the proclamation, so instead, I'd like to ask you to make another proclamation tonight or next council meeting, I would ask that we as a council, we as a community, would repent from our sins. God's word defines what is sinful and what is right and what is holy, and it is clear that homosexuality is sinful, just as it is murder, just as it is theft, even our thoughts, even looking with lust, it's sinful, and God's wrath is revealed against all unrighteousness. So I ask that you repent for our community, and if you will not, I will, so, dear Lord, in our prayers, at our funerals, our pastors aren't calling people to repentance, and I just went to a funeral, and the pastor treated everybody like they were saved, but the truth is that God has chosen His own to be saved, and we, faith comes by hearing and hearing through the word of God, if we're not proclaiming repentance for the forgiveness of sin through Jesus Christ, then we're failing to be Christians. So dear Lord, I repent for our city, for our community, I ask that you forgive us, forgive us as a nation, for we have sinned grievously against you, Lord, I pray that you will be merciful on us, Father, and hear our cry for forgiveness, I pray that you will, even today, change lives through Jesus Christ and through His blood. Your word says that we have gained peace with God the Father through the blood of Jesus Christ. God's wrath was poured out on Christ, so it will not be poured out on us for those who believe in Him. I ask that you forgive us, Lord, you cover us with the blood of your lamb, that you will call sinners to repentance, for that is why you came to this earth, Lord, forgive us our sins, Lord, I pray that Mayor Garola, that she will repent for this proclamation, it is an evil proclamation, it proclaims what is unjust and unright and unrighteous in your sight, Lord, and we want to be a holy nation and a holy people who live and who breathe and who strive to be, live lives that are pleasing for you, Lord. Your word defines what is true and what is pleasing in your sight, Lord, may we live according to your word. Father, for all those who have not been washed by the blood of Christ, we know that your wrath is upon them, not only in this life, but in the afterlife, in hell, Lord, it's eternity. We pray, Lord, that you will call sinners to repentance, you will redeem them by the blood of your lamb, and that you will be merciful on us as a nation, in Jesus' name, and as a community, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Yes, hello, my name is Kenneth Avila, and I would not like to reveal my address at this time. First thing I gotta say is, how dare you, how dare you, Virginia Garola, everyone in Porterville should know your name, and know that this woman is responsible for bringing down the morality of this entire city, you got the wrath of God on you, and now, and now, this gentleman over here said, may God forgive us, I will say for sure, God will not forgive you, and the scripture says, though hand join in hand, he will not acquit the wicked. And so, now what you got here is a proclamation saying that you are calling God a liar, God said, do not do that, and you say, no, it's okay, let's have them, let's let them be prideful, let's all get out, you send a message to the children of this nation and this city saying, it's okay to be a pervert, no, it's not okay to be a pervert, and instead of saying, we should let them be proud of this, we should attach the death penalty to this kind of disgusting behavior, and we should start prosecuting these perverts, God will not acquit you, God will not forgive you, amen.
Thank you.
May I interrupt, Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I've followed a little bit akin throughout the community in some of the things that he said, and even if you're right, you're not righteous, young man. I have friends in the front row you're sitting next to that are gay, that we can be friends with, I don't believe in the lifestyle, but I'm here to tell you right now, young man, I don't believe in what you do either.
Please, go ahead.
My pastor, we need you more now than anything else, sir.
Mark Pitcher, 2522 West Cricklewood Court here in Porterville, and my heart is grieving tonight, because you have been put in a place that is very difficult to be in, you're between a rock and a hard place, so no matter what action you take, you experience the brunt of people who are angry with you. That is unfortunate, and I'm saddened to see that, and I do believe, with what Councilman Sheldon mentioned, that there needs to be greater criteria provided for these resolutions, for tonight is a statement of what happens when there's not that kind of criteria. For a resolution should be provided to affirm something positive that has uplifted and encouraged our community, that has allowed people to feel a sense of unity and bonded us together. What we've experienced tonight is the opposite of that, so that means we need to come back and understand that resolutions should not be for a lifestyle, but it should be for an action that is taken to better our community. In the midst of that, we just need to be reminded that all people are of value, but not all beliefs have the same value, and we have the right to disagree with values and beliefs that are contrary to ours, and we can agree to disagree concerning that. So in the midst of that, as we would journey to the future, I think it's very important that there would be criteria given, and to seek to provide a resolution for what the purpose of it should be, and that is to affirm that action that was taken, that can bring us together, and put you in a position of affirming and encouraging, which I believe is exactly where you want to be. And I do pray for God's blessing upon you, because we need His blessing more than we need His curse.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor.
If we can please...
CC Townsend, we have Townsend Architectural Group here in Porterville. I believe the city should concentrate on city business such as fixing our streets and bridges, securing police and fire protection for the citizens, and promoting new businesses, and should not be in the business of promotion, of the promotion of sexual preferences. Since you have chosen to go down this path, then you must be prepared to promote whatever else comes down this path. Lastly, and this is on more of a personal note, in a very similar situation, a question was put to Sir Thomas More, Chancellor of England, regarding his refusal to sign a document to help secure a divorce for King Henry VIII. This question was put forth by Cardinal of England. The Cardinal of England said, asked Thomas More, explain to me how you, a statesman, can obstruct these measures for the sake of your own private conscience? More replied, I believe, I believe that when a statesman forsakes his own private conscience for the sake of his public duty, he leads his people on a short route to chaos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Kelly Teeter. When I came in here today, I had something completely different to say. Standing there in the back of this room, listening to people run their mouths and say bad things, it just, it broke my heart to have to listen to some of the derogatory things that were being said about everyone on this panel, as well as other people. Being gay has nothing to do with choice, you're either born that way or you're not. When we take against something, what are we teaching our children? By us having Pride Month, we're just letting our children know that they get to have every much of a right to be heard and to be seen, as straight people do. I teach my children every single day that it is okay to be you, there is no reason to hold what you are and who you are and what you believe against you, and that goes for the people who believe in things that I don't believe in. I would never come up here and point my finger at you, ma'am, and call you the names that have been said, that is wrong, and it's insanely offensive to me, and I'm not even you. So thank you so much for letting me come up here and say my two cents.
Thank you.
Good evening, my, sorry, my name is Cindy Dominguez.
Can you pick up the mic a little bit? Thank you.
Is that better? Okay, my name is Cindy Dominguez, and I would just like to say, thank you, Mr. Shelton, for getting this going, so we could get these things dealt with. The statistics that you opened up with, Mrs. Garola, were some of the statistics that I had also got online and found as far as, you know, the problems with bullying and teenage suicide with the gay and lesbian and the whole thing, I found those on the gay and lesbian websites, and that was the best thing they could come up with, to say this is why we need to promote the gay lifestyle, but also in my research, I have found, here are some other statistics that are equally as important, if not more important, and the statistics that you gave, I will have to say, that's the very reason why I think we should not be promoting this lifestyle. I don't want my daughter learning in school that it's okay to be gay and lesbian, because then you're gonna want to commit suicide, then you're gonna be picked on, that, you know, you're gonna feel all these things, but because it's a bad thing, we want you to accept it and become part of it, to me, that doesn't even, that's not even common sense. But anyways, here are some other statistics that I came up with, that I think are just as important, because gay pride is not just about, we want you to say, I'm gay and it's great, and then leave it there, what we're saying is, we want for you to be able to say, I'm gay, and look at my sexual preferences and the things that I prefer, and let's teach our children that that's a good thing, and that's, I don't, I can't even reconcile that in my brain, why we would want to be proud of something like that. But here are some statistics, let me just get to it. One study reports that 70% of homosexuals admitting to have sex only one time with over 50... only one time with over fifty percent of their partners. The average homosexual has between twenty and a hundred and six partners per year. The average heterosexual has eight partners in a lifetime. Many, I'm not, this is average.
Can we please go on?
This isn't everybody, this is on average. Okay? So, just bear with me. Homosexuals account for three to four percent of all gonorrhea cases, sixty percent of all syphilis cases, and seventeen percent of all hospital admissions other than for STDs in the U.S. They make up only one to two percent of the population. Homosexuals live unhealthy lifestyles and have historically accounted for the bulk of syphilis, gonorrhea, hepatitis B, and the gay bowel syndrome, which attacks the intestinal tract, tuberculosis, and cytomegalovirus. Seventy-three percent of psychiatrists say homosexuals are less happy than the average person. And of those psychiatrists, seventy percent say that the unhappiness is not due to social stigmatization. Twenty-five to thirty-three percent of homosexuals and lesbians are alcoholics. We, anyways.
Oh, I'm sorry, the time's up.
I'm hoping we're not gonna promote that to our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, if we can please. We're not gonna get through this if we continue to stop. Go ahead.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lance Seppi. I'm from the Porterville, on the western side of Porterville. And what I wanted to say today is, for two thousand years, homosexuality was almost like, it was prosecuted, it was greatly in the closet. In fact, it was not till Jeremy Bentham in the eighteen hundreds, and people like Walt Whitman, who praised homosexuality and was a homosexual himself, and also people like, and other, and two other men. Now, we've gotten to the twentieth, twenty-first century, and now homosexuality is out of the closet, and we need to remember what the Word of God says. It says, "If a man sleeps with a man as he should sleep with a woman, the two of them have committed an abomination, and they both shall be put to death." And that is the Creator, the universe, saying what God has laid down. And what I stated today is that homosexuals raising children, compared to homosexuals that are not raising children, I mean, compared to families, is ten times more to be abused and twenty times more sexually to be abused in the children that they're raising. And to praise this abominable lifestyle is to curse our nation. And we will, we will bring down the wrath of Almighty God. Blackstone, in his addiction, in his law, Two Volumes on Law, he, or actually Four Volume, he spoke various, he cursed all the civil magistrates, and for two, three hundred years, they followed exactly what Blackstone said. And that was that he required the death penalty for this lifestyle. This is a lifestyle that is destroying our culture, and I'm asking all parents here before me.
Your Honor, please address the council.
If you can please, yeah. Turn this way so that it can be under.
I'm asking that you remove your children from these government schools, because if you don't, you are taking part in this death style, in having your children in these schools. Talk to me, get your children out, homeschool your children, and raise them in the fear and admonition of the Lord, because God Almighty requires it. And to leave your children in those schools where they're teaching bisexual, transgender, queer, and they're completely screwing our children's minds, this is so abominable. You will bring the wrath of God on your families. And you are, you will stand before God for having your children in these death schools. Get your children out, fear God, open the book of Proverbs, and find out that the beginning of wisdom and knowledge is the fear of God. Repent of our sins, call on Jesus Christ to forgive us, and say, "Oh, God, have mercy on my children." Bring your children around you and repent, because if we don't, we will be destroyed, just like anybody else. And ma'am, I'm asking you to repent, because on Judgment Day, you will answer for this night. To praise transgender and queering our children is an abomination before Almighty God. And all I can say is that we must cry out to God, we must repent, and we must turn to God, because when, if we repent, he will hear from heaven, he will forgive our sins, and he will heal our land. And until we repent, there will be no victory in this world. This world will be judged.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Dennis Townsend, 484 North Prospect. First of all, I just wanna join a couple of people that say I'm really saddened and shocked by this proclamation tonight. It really didn't have any place in the city council chambers. It doesn't have any place in the city at all. It's not about a choice, it's not about the people that requested the proclamation. They're people, they're dealing with issues that they deal with. They want to have some positive recognition, that's totally understandable. But for us to come and to separate them out and to say, "Because you choose to be a lesbian, because you choose to be gay, because you choose to be bisexual, because you choose to be transgender, or because you're questioning your sexuality, we want to give you a special place, and we want to celebrate the fact that you're choosing to have sex in that fashion." It just doesn't make any sense that we would issue that proclamation. And council members, I applaud your courage, and I know this whole thing has been, it's been, it's been crazy, it's been a circus, it's been a zoo, because this is just a ridiculous thing to deal with at the council level. But the other four council members that did not sign, I applaud you for that. That was courageous of you to do that. And Mayor Garola, again, I'm just very disappointed that you went there with it. I know what you're trying, I know what you're trying to do, but it was the wrong thing to do. It was. And I'm not judging, I'm as bad as anybody else. I make mistakes all the time. And so, it's not a judgment, not looking down my nose at anyone. But you can see the council chambers, you can look out in the hallways, you can look at how people poured in with one or two days' notice that this was going to be read. And most of them are here to say that they are disappointed with and disagree with this proclamation. So, you just need to know that when you make the proclamation, you did speak for yourself, pretty much. And a small group that asked you, a small group from maybe some in this town, some in other towns, a small group of people, ask you to make a proclamation celebrating the way they have sex, you took the bait, you opened the door. They'll be back, there'll be more requests, I guarantee it. And so, I just wanna let you know that maybe the cat's out of the bag now, and maybe we won't make the same mistake in the future. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have probably about another ten minutes.
Kathleen Adams, Springville, Madam Mayor and council members. I disagree with this proposal to honor a group of people simply because of their sexuality. We, as parents and as members of our citizenry, already feel there is way too much of an accent put on this topic. Millions are spent to counsel teenagers about premarital sex. We have children giving birth to children, and yet we want to give public notice to a group whose claim to fame is their manner in which they engage in sex. I don't wanna know about their manner of sexuality. I don't wanna know about yours, either. Instead, why don't we have a month to honor our military, our veterans? Why don't we have a month to honor the teachers in our communities? The ones who guide us for at least thirteen years of our lives, helping us the best, to be the best we can be? Why don't we have a month to honor our police force, our firemen, our hospital and nursing home staffs, our clergy? Those who give to the community most often without any compensation for their time? Why don't we have a month to honor our volunteers, who give of their time and energy without any compensation other than it makes them feel good inside? From the one who picks up litter along the roads, to the one who donates her Monday, Monday evenings after she's done working to call bingo at a nursing home? To those who take in and care for stray animals? Or for that matter, who feed and shelter the homeless? I personally know people who do all of these things. Those are the ones we should honor with a month. Those are the people we can all be proud of. Those are the people who deserve our consideration. Let's give praise and thanks to people for what they've accomplished, what they've contributed to society, how they've helped others, not for... Please give this some thought and reconsider a better use for the month of June, or any month for that matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I can have the next person, please come up. We have about seven minutes, eight minutes left.
Mayor, we only have four more people. How about we just indulge now?
Is that, I don't have my glasses on.
What?
About four more, about four more people.
We'll take the next four.
Four or five people, looks like that line that we're, that.
Who else wants to speak?
Anybody else wanna speak?
Is it just right here?
Yes.
Okay. And then after that, if there is anyone who wishes to address any other items on the agenda, I'm gonna allow for those individuals to come forward, and that would be any other item on the agenda.
Your Honor. When we get done with this, may I suggest we go ahead with the agenda, because there's several items on the agenda that people may wish to speak to, that deal with the, with the city council business.
Go ahead, sorry.
My name is Anne Marie Wagstaff. I live at 382 North Indiana Street in Porterville. I did not prepare any remarks for tonight. I came here to receive a proclamation. A proclamation that has been a long time coming in this city. Change is hard. Change is very hard. But it does happen, and it does come. But it comes because people do speak up. For gays and lesbians, it becomes, it comes because we do come out and because we care about those that we love. It's not about sex, it's about love. My sister, who is also a lesbian, died two years ago. She died after being taken care of by her partner for three years in her home. And she, that was not about sex, that was about love. They were together for over thirty years. I've been working on this issue for literally forty years. And I have appeared at many city council meetings and other events where there has been public comment on this issue. And frankly, I heard the same things tonight I did forty years ago. But things have changed and times have changed. And we, as gays and lesbians, will no longer accept those myths and frankly, those lies about us. And I want to, I thank you for your courage, Mayor Garola. It's through acts like this that this change has come about. And finally, I would like to say one other thing. I believe in a separation of church and state. But I am also a Christian, and I would like to ask the gays and lesbians and transgender and bisexuals in this audience tonight to forgive the church for the way in which it has handled this issue and for the harm that it has done in the lives of so many people. And yes, the beginning of wisdom is the fear of God. And I hope, I hope, that some of, that some, a larger percentage of Christians will take, start to take that seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the next person, please, come forward? Can we please, the applause?
Mayor, I'd again like to address you and the rest of the city. I'd like to remind the members of this community that the proclamation was not brought forward by the mayor, but those of us within the LGBT population. And we stand proudly behind our mayor, for this country is founded on religious freedom, full of diverse community. I'm a member of the LGBT community, peacefully working towards equality for all people. What you've done today by signing the proclamation is helping the youth of this community feel less hatred than that, what is instilled by them, to them, by the very own people in this room. Proclamations, proclamations are made across the country daily, celebrating all walks of life and all occasions. Again, I'd like to reiterate, this is not promotion of lifestyle, or it is not a choice. Anyone who has ever walked our path would never choose this path. And I've stated to you in previous meetings, I was raised in the military, raised in a don't ask, don't tell, to believe that we all bleed the same blood. As I stand here today, listening to my fellow residents, I am appalled at the false statistics being stated. I implore everyone in this room to be a free thinker, do your own research. I am terrified by the way people are speaking about me personally in this room. Should I not be allowed to feel safe in my very own community? This is the very language in the community that the youth are attempting suicide in a true statistic released by our very own heterosexual counterparts, that the LGBT community, youth, are four times more likely to complete suicide, not because of, because they're gay, but because of how they are treated. Furthermore, I disagree with the demographic in this room. There is a very large representation of the gay and lesbian community here. This isn't about sex, this is about who we fall in love with. And today, we are honoring those within our community who do the same volunteer work that previous community members have stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the next person, please?
My name is Matthew Gifford, and I'm the youth pastor at New Hope Church. And I've heard a lot of very harsh things said today, and I think one of the things that, out of all these statistics, we hear that so many people commit suicide because of being gay and lesbian and because it's because they're bullied. I have a son that's, that's a very emotional boy. He's a very emotional boy, and he's bullied. But that doesn't mean that I want him being taught about homosexuality or, or any of this other stuff that's happening. You look back over history and, you know, that there's periods of time when different, different kinds of people have gotten rights. But there's not, there's not a Black Rights Month, there's not a Whammans Rights Month. There's, there's no kind of a month that has given anything.
Can you please, please, he's speaking?
I'm sorry, maybe there, maybe there is a month. I thought it was just a couple of days.
Go ahead, sir.
But, but I think it's very scary for the youth of our nation. I think it's very scary for the youth around here. I work with a lot of them, and I think we need to love and just show love to everybody. And I think there's a lot of hate in this room from both sides. And I think, I think that's very sad and very, very sorry for both sides. I think that this is something that, that doesn't need to be pushed out in front of everybody and forced on, on everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Hello, my name is Amber Denard. I live at 722 Andres Court. I'm twenty-five, a mother of two, and I'm also a lesbian, although I do have children. And I just wanted to come up here to thank you. I mean, you didn't give us the right to get married. I don't know why everybody's so upset. Just for us to be okay with who we are, and, you know, if I wanna wear my rainbow shirt and wear pigtails, that that's okay, and everybody's gonna know that I'm gay and I'm happy. I don't have sex on the streets, I don't know what this sexual, I know what you're doing kinda deal is, you're kinda sick for thinking about it, but it is what it is, I guess. And I just wanna come up here and tell you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. If I could, please, please.
My name is Melody Seppi.
Just a little bit forward to the mic.
My name is Melody Seppi, and with all due respect, God calls you to be a terror to evil doers, and he calls you to fear God. And God has, has clearly laid out in his word that sodomy is sin. And it is your duty as a civil magistrate to enforce the law, not to redefine what sin is. Either, you and I cannot define what is sin. God, and only God, can define what is sin, he's done so in the Bible. And he hates sin. His holiness demands that, that we die for our sin. But God sent his son to die for you and for me, and for all those who have sinned. And, and it's your duty to repent before God for your sin and proclaiming what he has called sin, to be righteous, and for calling good evil and evil good.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to address any item on the agenda that didn't have an opportunity?
Oh, that's right.
I think that you can take a recess.
Take a recess. Okay. Can I, can I please, I wanna say something. I have a deep love for God. He is my Savior. I pray every council meeting before I come in for our community. I apologize. Because when I think of God and his death on the cross for us and all our sins, it brings tears to me. But he's. But He saved, even on that day on the cross, a person who was a thief, a person who was a murderer, a person who sinned. In their last breath, they asked for God's forgiveness. My whole life is based on God and Jesus Christ. My family is based on God and Jesus Christ. My love is for Him and my family. And my love is for this community, that we come together and pray for one another. And maybe through this, we can reach out to one another and help those who maybe are struggling through so many different feelings. Why did I do this? Because I tell youth to stand up. Stand up and be proud of who you are. You don't hear them all the time when they're in pain, when they're struggling to find out whether it be because of who they are, or because of the color of their skin, or because of their height, or because they're not smart enough for, because they're too smart and they don't fit in. We are a community, let's work together. And yes, over us, right over us, in God we trust. I trust in God. And whether you agreed or not, I thank you for coming forward. And I thank everybody in the community who's been sending me emails, or texting me, or calling me, saying, "I'm praying for you, Virginia, tonight." And before I came in, I put my hands in God, just as I do every single day. I wish to thank you all for coming here tonight, and let's have some peace as we continue this agenda. We're going to take a five-minute break.